I would like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 24th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. So we'll move on to Chairperson's Report. So I guess not so much as a report, it's just some thoughts about the budget cycle. So we're here this evening to hear some comments from the Board of Finance, RTM Education, RTM Budget Committees, and then the Board will continue to do its work. So I think it's more just a reminder as to where we are in the process. So we had our Super Saturday, the Board continues to do its work around the Superintendent's Budget, and we'll continue to do our work around the Superintendent's Budget. There are a lot of questions just amongst the Board members going back and forth, and we'll continue to do that work. And the 24th, we'll start, you know, talking about where we may want to make cuts and adds. It's our traditional cut and add night. So the only thing I will say is, you know, some meetings that I've listened to, and I just think we all need to pause. We've got great working relationships and partnerships with RTM Education, with RTM F&amp;B, with CDSP, and with CPAC. But as I look through the questions, I think it's a good reminder to let everyone know that this is really about the 23-24 budget cycle and what's in the budget. And when I look through some of these questions, it starts to become kind of a catch-all of everything people have been thinking about, talking about, or wanting to hear about over the last year. And I look at some of these questions, and a good percentage of them are answered throughout the course of the year in various presentations that we do and updates that we do. We have a master agenda that we go over frequently, and it's a lot of pressure to put on an administration and the folks that work within the administration to answer all these questions. And it takes away from the day job, which is educating and spending time with our students. So I would ask that we continue to think about and look at the questions we're asking. All right, there's an example here, and I'm sorry, but I'm gonna go there. Please provide for the last five years average SAT scores, the seal of bilatoracy recipients over the last five years, any metrics the administration follows on computer literacy and coding skills, graduation rate, student-teacher ratio, club, sports, and participation. You know, that is stuff we go over on a regular basis. All right, so that's in presentations, it's stuff that's on our website. So, you know, the process that I think, that I know the administration's taking, we appreciate all the questions, and this is kind of a give and take. We listen, we learn. I think we always walk away from these budget conversations. We're trying to do things a little differently and better. And in the nine years I've been on the Board, and the last three years, I've had the privilege and the honor to sit here, we've improved in the process, we've improved on the financial reporting, and we'll continue to do that. And there's some good ideas and suggestions in here. But I think the goal will be to stay focused on the budget questions, all right? And then take a lot of the other questions, put them in kind of the parking lot, and figure out where we need to have some follow-up meetings, whether it's the subcommittees, CDSP, and CPAC meet regularly with Allen. And we'll focus on stuff where there's improvements and different things that we want to change or different things that we want to report on. But it's really not our responsibility, all right? These nine members of this Board work incredibly hard over the course of the year. We have two meetings a year, we have five subcommittee meetings a week, all right? There was a lot of information out there, there's a lot of information put out there. It's not our job during the budget season to re-educate the population that has not been paying attention throughout the course of the year. All right, it is not. All right, there are important questions to be asked around the budget, around programs, around stuff that we've implemented, and we'll answer those questions. But to go back and rehash stuff that's been talked about, presented, reviewed, debated, you know, and the information is out there, it's not fair to the administration, and it's not fair to the Board. The other component of some of the conversations that I've heard also is, you know, you go down these paths, and these are the words, "Well, you know, we need to push back, and, uh, you know, well, we need to criticize, we need to chastise." That's not the goal, and that's not where we should be going with these meetings. All right, this is about a partnership, and this is about working together for the benefit of our students, and that's what we'll continue to do. You know, right off the bat, several questions, "The budget's too high, the budget's too high, the budget's too high." What does that mean? And what is that in relation to? To me, I'll be honest with you, that's a dumb question, the budget is too high. It's a dumb question. It proves that the work wasn't done behind the scenes to pay attention to what's going on. We just renegotiated a three-year contract that's at like 13.6%. Utilities are up, overall costs are up, all right? It's not necessarily about the number, it's about the components of what's in the budget and what we're delivering to our students. And the priority is safety and security, and the priority is mental health, as I've repeatedly said throughout these meetings. So our commitment is to continue to work with everyone from a community standpoint. We have more participation than ever at these meetings, which is appreciated. We'll continue to work with the great partners we have on finance, on RTM Education and F&amp;B, and the general community and our partners. But I just need to push back a little because the time and energy that the Board and the administration is spending on this, and the repeat questions, there can just be some better coordination. And I think after this is all over, we'll kind of have a little budget summit and talk about how we can do this better and more efficiently. So I appreciate you listening, but I think with respect to what I've heard from the administration and the Board, it's important that we kind of get that information out there. It's important work, and we'll continue to do it. So thank you for listening. We will move on to public comment.
Good evening. Good evening. If anyone in person would like to participate, please wait for the chair to acknowledge you. You can come up to the podium, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
We'll start, folks that are in-house. Sure, come up to the podium. Thank you.
So hello, my name is Owen Miller, and I would like to talk about the budget for robotics at the high school. Last year, my friend, Hosway, and I, we started the robotics team, and we did, really did want it to be a team and not a club because with a team, you get the aspects of leadership and camaraderie, and we spend a lot more time and we're more dedicated than a lot of these other clubs. We have had a great budget so far, and we've used it to the fullest extent. We have signed up for first robotics competition and Norwalk Havoc Robotics League, which is a local competition, but is also growing, and it's exciting a lot of people in the engineering field. We've had 52 students come in general, and we have about 13 students every meeting. And we're teaching engineering to all these kids who might not think that it's cool, like, oh, who wants to study architecture? But when you see these robots blowing up in your face, you're like, oh, um, I want to do that. And there's, um... For, everyone's thinking about college, and sure, you can get taught in math and science and English, but there's not a lot for engineering. And with this robotics club and the robotics club at the younger schools, which are full, and we need to continue that at the high school, this is a great way to introduce people to different engineering fields, prepare them for college. That's it.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Next in the audience, just step up to the podium, please, thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Kane. I'm gonna change a little bit of what I'm gonna say because I didn't know Owen and the team would be here. I'm the executive producer of the NHRL, and I've lived in town for about eight years.
Sir, could you just make sure you're close to the microphone? So we've got people online also.
Sure, of course. So I'm the executive producer of the Norwalk Havoc Robot Week. I'm gonna correct one thing that Owen said. We're actually a nationwide competition, people come from as far as Brazil. I'm actually so impressed that this team showed up today. Just wanted to reiterate, I had a whole thing prepared, but I wanted to reiterate how important robotics is, the profound effect that I've seen it have on teenagers and people like Owen and their team. And, um, yeah, I'm not gonna talk numbers, that's up to you, but just sort of reiterate that as much as you can put behind it, it really does mean something to these kids. So, thank you.
Thank you for speaking.
Sir, can you spell your last name for me? Sorry.
Sure. Kane, K-A-N.
Thank you, and your address? Address?
137 Holotree, Vidra.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Um, hi, my name is Mirabel Chin. I'm also a senior at DHS. And so I kind of wanted to talk about robotics from like an outside perspective, so to speak. To be completely honest, I'm really good at music. I'm really not great at STEM, like, to put that out there. I am very comfortable in a more creative arts field, but I decided to pick up robotics this year because I had a lot more free time as a senior with more free periods, and I thought it'd be something really interesting to explore. And oh my God, it's been really fun. Like, I've learned so much, and I feel like I've learned a lot of, like, not only just about robotics, but basic tool skills, like how to use a drill. I think it's really important, I'm not gonna lie. And I feel like we have a lot of really great resources in the tech ed room and a lot of really great funding for robotics, and I think that we've been using that as best as we can right now. So I feel like cutting back funding on that could potentially hinder other kids coming from outside areas wanting to learn more about robotics because we have a really great foundation for learning the basics and then expanding on that. So I think it would provide a really great future for outside students and also just underclassmen who are now rising up that also want to further explore robotics as a career potentially, and would not have known that if they hadn't have joined. And so I just think it's been a really great experience. I've really gotten to learn a lot, and I think it's very important to continue to build this really strong foundation that we have for this program. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Anyone else in the audience? Michelle, anyone online?
Oh, I think we have one more.
Yes, please step up, thank you, come up to the podium.
Um, hi, my name's Francesca Perfumo, and I'm a junior at Darren High School who does the Darren Robotic Team with the other people. And when the tech ed department announced last year that the robotics team was gonna be a new club in spring, I was ecstatic to join. I've always had a love for all things STEM when I was a kid, especially robotics. And I was kind of in these clubs, but I haven't really put myself in the STEM community as much as I wanted to be. So when I saw robotics, I thought it'd be a great opportunity to learn more. And I gained so much more than just learning about robotics and learning about STEM. And I wasn't expecting, um, the, um, how different of a person I would become. The Mr. Darren and Ms. O'Connor, who are teachers that work with the robotics team, have just been so amazing. And when Mr. Darren asked me to help have more of a leadership role with the girls' team and kind of be a person to show these girls who don't know much about STEM and are joining for the first time, it gave me so much more confidence, and it's the reason I can now speak publicly, especially when you're younger, and like STEM is a more conservative field, like people are more introverted, and it gave me just so much more confidence, and it taught me so much. And I feel like I have these skills that I'm gonna shake away for the rest of my life, and the robotics team has really changed me. And I truly just go after school every day or before school, and I just have a love working for these people. Like, I think how excited I am to be able to work on my robotics projects in my free time because even if it's educational, I just think, wow, this is something that really excites me, and these competitions coming up. And it's really just created a community for me where I can go and be excited with people who are excited about the same things as me. And I really think that it's important that we help these new coming freshmen because you come into the school and you're kind of shy, and it kind of just creates a comforting place to express yourself, and you develop into a person who is just so comfortable with your interests and who you are. And that's really important for the future and being able to speak for yourself and what you think. Because when you're in a team, you're not always gonna agree, and that's the best thing about robotics team. It's, it's a club where you're sharing opinions and you're kind of discussing what you think is the best path to shake. And I really think that that's an opportunity that we really need to keep focusing on for the upcoming kids at the school. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Anyone else in the audience? Michelle, anyone online?
If anyone on Zoom would like to participate, please use the raised hand option. There are no raised hands at this time.
Since we don't have public comment at the end, anyone else in the audience? We're good? We move on? All right, thank you all, thank you for speaking. We will move on to comments from Board of Finance and RTM Education and Finance and Budget Committees on the fiscal year 24 proposed budget. I'll stick with the order that's in the agenda here. So Dan from the Board of Finance, if you want to come up and speak?
Dan Baumgartner, Vice Chair of Board of Finance, and these comments are from the Board of Finance, not necessarily mine as a citizen. Sure, and Paul, if you have anything else to add, please, please jump in. So we submitted comments and questions in writing earlier, and I'll largely let that document speak for itself. But a couple of summary observations. We understand and applaud the increased focus on mental health and security, but at a high level, we're concerned with overall spending growth proposed in this budget cycle, as well as the implications of adding this many FTEs on future budgets, particularly given the likely jump in healthcare-related costs. We're also interested in the January 24th discussion on proposed staffing related to mental health. I'd say, um, there's a, there's a number of areas, whether it's security or mental health or special ed, where we don't necessarily have an issue with the number of FTEs dedicated to that, but there's a, at least for me, and I think some of my partners, is a lack of clarity as to what specifically each of those FTEs is, is doing on a day-to-day basis and how that relates to others within the same discipline and what, how, how those job responsibilities differ. And so we're, we're again supportive of a comprehensive plan against both security, special ed, mental health, but just a little bit more clarity around those various job functions would be appreciated. And again, there's a lot more in the document, and I'll leave the document for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Paul, anything to add? You're good, all right. We'll move on to RTM Education and Finance. RTM Education and Finance, so.
Ed Woschek, Chairman of the Education Committee. These comments are effectively, um, my own as, as, because I did not circulate them ahead of time with the rest of the committee. You have our questions that we prepared from last night. Appreciate all the work that you've done and that you continue to do. I think I would just like to say that there are a lot of people on the committee who do a lot of work and do watch many of the meetings that you guys have. I, for one, I don't watch them all, and I think it's incredible the amount of work that you guys do collectively on the committees in particular. So I do very much appreciate it. There are folks on our committee who do feel that the budget exercise is an opportunity for them to delve quite deeply into the weeds on some of the accounts and programs. There are others like me that would look at the overall picture and would look at the Board as having, um, really the control on how this money is spent. So, you know, with that sort of said, as, um, as a preface, I thought that a lot of the questions asked by the Board of Finance were very, very on point. And to just address your, uh, your comment on, you know, is the, you know, is, is the increase too much? I think that's a, you know, it's a very fair statement. I think I would just sort of say, given, um, given my own view as a taxpayer on, you know, what we, um, what we should be spending on our property taxes, which ultimately fund the schools, I would look less on, you know, is it this program or that program? But, you know, on, on an overall spending level and whether that can be achieved by, you know, getting revenue elsewhere, donations elsewhere, whatever else. And as I said, these are, you know, my, my own comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you for your questions. We'll move on to RTM Budget and Finance.
Good evening, I'm Beth Lane. Peter Orfanos and I are the Vice Chairs for the Education Budget on the RTM Finance and Budget Committee. I'll just move that down a little. I am not as tall as everybody else.
You just maybe move it over a little, and I think just more for people online. Go ahead.
Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Beth.
Peter has a work commitment that prevents him from being here this evening, but I want to acknowledge his contributions to our remarks this evening, which were enormous. We'd like to thank the Board for the opportunity to present the committee's preliminary comments on the Superintendent's Proposed Budget. But before moving to specific budget questions, we'd like to address three general interrelated concerns as presented below. These concerns are central to our committee's evaluation of the financial impact of the education budget and to our determination of appropriate action and recommendations to the RTM. First point is the need for program-related forecasting and projection of anticipated future expenses. Our first concern focuses primarily on new programs and spending directed to fulfill previously stated strategic goals. While we support pursuing strategic goals, we'd like to see a reasonable forecast of the program's anticipated costs in subsequent years. During this time, the new program finds a permanent home in the curriculum and, of course, the education budget. The bottom line is that launching new programs results in subsequent appropriations for years going forward in the same way that new FTEs create financial obligations in salary and benefits that far exceed initial budgeting. Our committee can't assess the qualitative impact of new programs or the accompanying FTEs without understanding the full cost down the road. An example from the current year budget was the addition of a .4 FTE Mandarin teacher for the sixth grade, which is this year. The proposed budget for next year has another .4 FTE for Mandarin in the seventh grade, and we presume another .4 FTE for Mandarin in fiscal year '25. But we haven't heard any three- to five-year analysis presented to the Board for the full cost to the current and future budgets of implementing Mandarin throughout the system, nor is there an indication from the administration as to when the Board should expect the corresponding reduction of FTEs in other foreign language staff. The second point is further detail in how some of the new FTEs is to address strategic goals. Our committee would like to see further detail about how new FTEs address these goals. The most direct example is the new Director of Mental Health. There's been no presentation on how the new director fits into a fully integrated plan concerning the mental health and social emotional learning goals for the next three to five years. The committee concurs with Board Member Dennis Maroni's request for an organization chart addressing how all the individual FTEs and pieces of the program are integrated. To paraphrase one committee member, "How do the pieces fit together? Has the new director commented on teen talk? Does the new director concur with the FTE to staff the wellness center? We suggest that new FTEs be held in abeyance until the director can present her plan. Once there's a fully integrated rollout with a three- to five-year plan, the committee would be fully supportive of adding funding back into the Board budget as warranted." Another example is the proposed robotics program. It seems that this is being considered outside the scope of the, our overall STEM strategy. Excuse me, strategy, as was mentioned by David Brown. One committee member who supports STEM programs asks about how robotics fit into coding instruction up to and through DHS, as that has not been addressed. As noted by Duke Deneen, while STEM is important, robotics program would receive a highly disproportionate share of club funding, and we just would look forward to the Board's review of the program. The next point is proper presentation of initiatives. The committee believes the administration should present new initiatives prior to their expenses being included in the budget, which would provide the Board with ample time to vet the initiative. This proposed budget includes initiatives with financial impact where a formal presentation to the Board has not yet occurred. David Brown has frequently made this request, and our committee concurs with Mr. Brown. Um, our last general point, the Board's approach to returning unused budgeted, but budgeted funding to the town at the conclusion of the fiscal year. The administration presented to the Board that has historically expended 99.7% of its budget and returned 0.3% back to the town. The committee does not question the math, but we do not agree with the administration's conclusion. Missing from that analysis is technology prebiase, uses of budget control other than the breaking of elementary school section, which is intended for, vacancy savings, new initiatives using excess funds, and new FTEs. The committee's reasonableness with respect to the Board having a degree of flexibility is not unbounded. We believe that tighter budgeting by the administration is more financially responsible to the Darian taxpayer. The committee has stated publicly that in consideration of the same, it would address ad hoc educational appropriations in due course should the need occur. In summary, the proposed budget increase of 4.94% is not fiscally responsible in the view of many of on our committee. The size of the increase is even less warranted, given that many economists are forecasting a recession. The scope of the increase, while affected by the increase in teacher and substitute pay, is based on other components that may not represent our most pressing priorities. Our committee would welcome a prioritization of goals that lead to additional spending. We'd like to know which additions to the budget represent the most pressing priorities of the proposed expansion, Mandarin, ASL instruction, SEL initiatives? Which ones are the highest priority? Because everything can't be the top priority. Moreover, our committee and the Board should know how these expenditures project out over the next three to five years, and we would welcome such a projection. As discussed above, when new initiatives or additional FTEs are presented to the Board and to the RTM, the cumulative effect of prior Board program initiative and FTE approvals over the next three to five years to their budget should be presented. The cumulative analysis would show all prior commitments, providing the Board and the RTM a total picture of budget implications from the new initiative, as well as prior costs and commitments that have already been made. Finally, we have a few specific questions and information requests from our committee to aid us in evaluating this budget. For technology, what was the actual number of machines and costs for each of the systems on the fiscal year '22 list, and what was the variance to the original budgeted amount? For FTEs, what are the FTEs added to public schools over the last two years, fiscal year '23, and projected fiscal year '24, broken down by administration position, teachers, other staff, athletics, and clubs? What FTEs were reduced in the same categories? In other words, a movement from professional staff to administration would result as an increase in the first chart and a decrease in the second chart? For athletics, it was mentioned that all sports teams have transportation costs funded, including end-of-season tournaments built in, regardless of the likelihood of attendance. What was the original budget for the last fiscal years, '21, '22, '23? What were the actuals for fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22 by team? Which teams actually attended tournaments? For structural vacancies, what structural vacancies, in other words, unfilled FTEs, were there in '21, '22, and '23? Please account by administration, teachers, staff, and others, and funds allocated for the unfilled positions. Grants, for each grant received, could we please have the proposed budget with FTEs and line items added on for each of the grants, as well as the length of the grant funding? We are looking for the real cost to run schools. For special education, please identify efficiencies due to consolidation of ELP at Oxbridge Elementary, including but not limited to reduction in travel or other expenses. We understand that the efficiencies might not relate to direct cost reductions, but rather allow for a reallocation of those resources to meet other needs. In two of the last three years, off-cycle capital requests have been made. What are the security-related capital requests being considered that are not being presented at this time? And finally, Chair Deneen wondered what future custodial needs would be upon completion of the HHR construction. Similarly, what additional groundskeeping needs are contemplated given the changes to those schools' courtyards in the HHR plans? And that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, that wraps up comments from Board of Finance and RTM Education and RTM Finance and Budget. We'll move over to further discussion on the 2023-2024 proposed budget. Any follow-up questions from Dr. Adley?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for those who presented this evening, and also to our students who were present. So for the follow-up discussion, just by way of, of update for the Board of Finance questions, the RTM Education questions, and any of the other questions that we received tonight for RTM F&amp;B. By the latest, we'll get those, our intent is to get those certainly by Friday at the latest. For our Board questions, we have two sets of questions. One with the first round, second round of questions that are included in the packet. Third round of questions that we are just finalizing, and they will be sent out tomorrow morning because they're, that we're more or less completed with those. So we'll have those out to the Board first thing in the morning. So that, that's the sort of status of responses to the questions at this point. If the Board would, has any other questions as we go through the responses to the Board questions, starting with the first, January 7th, and then we have January, I think, 13th, I believe, for the second round of questions. If you want to go, if we just want to go through these, Mr. Deneen? I don't know if I want to read all of that, I don't think I have to. If we just, just go through them, and if there's any...
No, a lot of reading and a lot of, lot of good work. Thank you, all those folks that have worked on all these questions. So I think in the interest of, of everyone's time and where everyone might be with... Of everyone's time and where everyone might be with reading and doing follow up, maybe we'll just go around the table. So. I'll start Tara Worm. Anything you want to, any questions or any additional comments with respect to budget, budget questions overall?
Not based on these questions, more, you know, in the budget book, right? I know that you guys, there's a great breakdown with. Administration and, and all of that. I, I would actually like to see it even more granular, you know, because I think one of our biggest problems, as I've mentioned, you know. With insurance going to be on the rise and the amount of FTEs we're adding and have added, not just adding this year, but have added in the past years. To really see a breakdown of. You know, administration, teachers, Paris, special, just like kind of so that we can look and see exactly what our ratios are. And know exactly what we're looking at.
Just, just the numbers, Tara? Just the number of staff?
Right. Yeah, yeah, just the numbers of staff. Right. So, you know, I mean, obviously some of it's. Some of it is obvious, right? I know how many principals we have. I know how many.
Do you want it, do you want it? Rich is probably already calculating on his computer now, the way Rich works. Do you want it broken down by school with then a roll up?
It would be nice to see it by school as well. Yes. But you know, how many psychologists, how many counselors, how many Paris, how many, you know, literally down the line? I mean, I don't think we need to know how many custodians, but if we want to know that, we can know that too.
All right. Thank you, Tara. Sarah?
I think most of my questions will be hopefully answered at the twenty fourth meeting. So I think, and I want to wait and see what. Comes up the next batch of answers, so I will withhold my questions for now.
Thank you. Yeah, I think most of my questions have been captured. Some of them started, been answered, so we'll move on there. Jill is not feeling well this evening. Dennis is out of town, so we'll move on to Dave.
Thank you. A lot of great questions tonight, and I appreciate the answers received so far. Look forward to getting more. I guess just following up to Tara's request in terms of the FTEs, I, I think that's. Something we've heard and I think it's important. I know we have a nice summary here with this, this pie chart, I guess. Just think about how we could see that, Rich. I know you have just broken up a little bit into teachers versus paras versus custodians even. Like I'd love to see it on a district level. I'd like to see the breakdown on a building level. I think not only just the FTE, just the head count, but also like a dollar number. And I don't know how much work this is, but I would love to see. The past five, even ten years, like where we are, just some trend lines, or at least have the data to be able to map that out and, and see where we're going and where we've been. And just with the overall, you know, growth rates been throughout the various departments. So whatever, you know, raw data you can give us. People can do their own couch and roll up however they want, but. It just in terms of dollars and in terms of bodies, that would really be great to see both district and.
Rich, I know systemic wise and all, we've had these conversations in the past. What's realistic? Five years?
Yeah, I think five years.
Okay, all right. I, I think just to follow up on, on Dave and Tara's question, because I think I've seen this question embedded in some of the questions from our partners. Maybe as part of a presentation, Rich. Then like take it to the next step and tie it into here are the unions, here are the memberships in the unions. And I think that starts to give a broad picture from a staffing standpoint. If I make sense. And, and I guess it's unions, it's certified staff, it's paras. Put them in the appropriate unions and the membership associated with the unions. All right, good. Thank you. Yes, Dave.
Just following up on that, Rich, I don't like. Can you give us just an Excel and people can sort and build and do whatever, or more flexibility versus a summary? I don't know how you can pump out raw data. I don't want you just like digging and punching the numbers.
Almost everything I do is in Excel, so I could.
So, yeah. I think, even if you want to do a summary, if like the raw data is back there, you know, that'd be helpful to be able to collate or process or people can do what they want. And I'm going to push back a little bit, Mr. Chairman. I know five years sounds good, maybe seven.
Five years is fine. Thank you, Dave. Five years is fine, based on the day job that these folks have. I don't know what else it's going to tell you in the past five years. Rich, I would also. Add, because I'm just trying to think what, what gives a consolidated picture. Maybe you've got the staff, you've got what unions they're in. I think the added thing is what number of those folks take the healthcare benefit? And I, I don't know if there's a column there that. Then can be expanded on some of the questions around retirement. And then that gives a broad view from a kind of an org chart staffing standpoint. Thank you. Tomorrow by nine.
Thank you. I echo what Sarah said, and I'm sure that I will have more questions following some of the presentations. The questions that I did submit were in here, so thank you for that. I know this is a lot. I do want to follow up a bit on some of the questions that have been asked, maybe just to clarify, kind of.
Sorry, okay, who has?
Oh, that just have been asked by, kind of broadly by, by multiple different constituents. I'd like to, like, for example. There was a question about, about caseloads, not even from the board, as it relates to. Special education service providers with a link back to the December overview. And I just want to reiterate that I think it would be really helpful to, to see actual numbers, maybe highs and lows. Medians just are not giving us the picture that we need to understand. It's, it's quite easy to be thrown off by a high or low. So I'd love to see actual caseloads for, for special education providers, for psychologists, I think was asked as well. And then following up to another thing. With the conversations, all of these are kind of related to the addition of FTEs and thinking about planning for next year. I, I just have a lot of concerns about, about. Our staffing issues as it relates to special education in particular, and I, I'd like to know. What we're doing to track the missed services and the expenses that are related. We know that. Teachers are less expensive than outside contracted consultants, right? We know that those consultants are less expensive than. Lawyers and out placements. And I, I want to be sure that we can have confidence going into the next year. That we are going to be adding enough staff. So. The services in particular would be nice to see as well, and the costs that, that we accrue by not having those positions filled.
Thanks, Katie. Julie?
Thank you. I had sent in some follow up questions, so I would expect we'll see those tomorrow. Thank you. One other point I want to follow up on, and I might be being obvious, so forgive me if I am. I'm hoping for our presentation on the mental health overview next week, that that's more than just an, an org chart and an explanation of who reports to who. I'm hoping we'll get more of an overview on services provided and how these things interrelate and a little more qualitative. Information around.
I'll continue to talk about the agenda, the agenda items and how they're described. Tech, what is on, on the agenda is the connectionness to the mental health support at the high school, how they all work. I think I'll give people.
How they all work together, right? Yeah, that's how they complement one another or, or, okay. Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Thanks, Julie. John?
First, I applaud your opening comments. Thanks for making that clear. I feel like sometimes people. Don't truly understand their roles and responsibilities in local town governance. Nice to get that reminder. Now, I watched the F and B meeting from last Wednesday, and there was a comment made that they represent taxpayers, but. I'd like to remind the members of all the RTM committees that we're townwide elected officials, and I take it very seriously to represent taxpayers. Who are out the town, not just in my own district. So I just want to make that pretty clear. I want to throw some questions out to the Board of Finance. You know, in, in the document that the public will see posted, it starts out, a five percent increase in the operating budget seems unnecessarily high. For the Board of Education to continue to deliver the same top notch educational experience in our schools. And it goes dot, 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 and it's number of, one of thirty eight questions and comments. So I want to throw it back to the Board of Finance to get some guidance. What would it consider? An increase that is not unnecessarily high, and the same goes to. The plant, F and B, who tonight said this budget is not fiscally responsible. So what would they think is fiscally responsible? That guidance would be appreciated before we get to half cut night. I'd also like to remind people that this is the superintendent's proposed budget. This is not the Board of Education's budget. I've kept pretty quiet as I gather information, but there's certainly items like, you know, since I've been on the board, it's been after budget control. The fact that we aren't mentioning it or questioning it doesn't mean that we don't have concerns over it. So, you know, I'm. Again, I'm reflecting on some of the comments I heard at F and B that, you know, we don't run this board and this budget like a business, I think was the quote. Again, I can, I'll speak for myself, but I know many fellow members of this board take our role and responsibility of being fiscally responsible. Extremely serious. You know, the, the subject Mandarin was also amazingly, you know, focused on. We discussed adding additional FTEs. When we brought on the first program. And so again, to echo Duke's, it is not our role to make sure you watch every meeting and do your homework. You know, we are elected town officials to handle this budget. It's under state statute that gives us that authority on a line item basis. So when you think about the budget, I want you to think on a broad macro scale. We can't do that. We can't integrate in a purchase of an island into our. Five or six year forecast, which by the way, F and B does. And so does the Board of Finance. So just, you know, to echo Mr. Deneen's comments, I want you to think broader, more macro as you bring back the feedback to us. I don't know what the fire department, you know, fire truck budget is. I don't focus on that. I do focus. With the administration and some of the concerns you brought forward, like prioritization, it's something we brought, you know, forth in the twenty twenty one budget. Increase that was reduced. You know, we asked for prioritization. We didn't get it. So there's certain things we ask as board members that we don't get as well, and I just want you to understand that. We are concerned, we are taking it seriously. That went on long enough, sorry.
Okay, thank you, John. Dr. Adley, anything you want to wrap up on?
No, just that we'll, we'll get those questions, the additional questions again tomorrow morning for, for the board and as quickly as possible to the respective committees.
Hey, good. I appreciate everyone's speaking this evening. I appreciate the board comments. And again, thank you for all the questions and we'll continue to, to move this forward. We do focus on this from a business perspective. For anyone to say otherwise is not true. Most of the folks on this board are business folks or have business backgrounds. And we look forward to continuing to work with you. And again, I think if we keep the focus on our students. We will make the right decisions as we go forward. You know, I, I say it repeatedly, and there were, there were conversations this week about budgets and. You know, at the end of the day, we continue to be a number one district in the state. We continue to be a top district in the country. I met three new families this weekend as part of a meeting I was at that moved here and their primary reason was for education. All right, so we'll continue to look at the budget carefully and cautiously. And we'll focus on our students, and I know as a group, as a team and as a community, we'll continue to move this forward. So thank you, everyone. For coming and speaking this evening and, and have a good evening, and I think we'll see most of you tomorrow night. So may have a meeting to, may have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Julie Best, second by John Seeny. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.